And the League for all this support. And thanks to candidates very much for signing up to participate in this wonderful opportunity to meet your candidates. I'm duty bound to give you what I call the League of Women Voters commercial. The League of Women Voters was founded over 100 years ago. And its goal is to train voters to participate in government. So you're part of the important business of voter education. The League does not ever, it's totally nonpartisan, does not ever support either a candidate or a party. And so with that little speech, for tonight's meeting, we will start out with opening statements by all of the candidates. There are a total of 11 candidates for four positions. And the Board of Education is a citywide election, doesn't go by award. Of the 11 candidates, there are two who are unable to attend, and I have an opening statement, which will be read by Carol. The order of speaking will be varied, but for the purposes of tonight's, I'm going to start with opening statements that will be in alphabetical order. Each of the candidates will have two minutes. And when you get to 30 seconds remaining, I'll wave this yellow thing. And when your time is up, you get a red flag in front of my face. And that means please finish your sentence, but don't start another one. Then we will vary the questions, the order, excuse me, of speaking for the questions. After the opening statements, we will have time for a few questions. Unfortunately, because of our time constraints, that we will not get to all the questions that have been submitted by the public. We will try and keep it interesting and give you all a chance to speak. You'll have a minute and a half. And there will be no rebuttals unless somebody is mentioned by name or title. And then they will get 30 seconds to respond. So let me start with the opening statement. And we'll start with in alphabetical order first time around. So Mr. Chaffey, you're up, and I will let you know when your time is up.
So it is Claffey, but it looks like an H. Hi, good evening, and my name is Neil. I'm here tonight. That's okay.
No.
I'm here tonight hoping it's I'm hoping to earn your vote for the Board of Education. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, Nashville Public Library for hosting this forum. We candidates are fortunate to have an opportunity to let voters get to know us. The term transparency seems to be popular, a popular campaign promise this election season. First, a bit about me and my family. I began my teaching career here as a social studies teacher at Nashville High School when it was one school in 1989. And I just retired this past June. I have a BA in economics from UNC Chapel Hill and a master's of education from Harvard. My wife and I had lived here in Nashua nearly 20 years. Both of our adult sons attended Nashville Public Schools, elementary through high school. I never intended to run for this office when I decided to retire last winter. But as I witnessed divisive voices disrupt our board meetings inside videos showing those same talking points presented to school boards across the country, I decided to step forward. I hope to move from the classroom to the boardroom in order to leverage my decades of teaching experience. My priorities include completion of the middle school projects, recruitment of a highly qualified superintendent who is committed to Nashua, closing any learning gaps caused by the pandemic, addressing the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students. And finally, honoring the promises made to our English language learners in a court settlement with the Department of Justice a few months ago. Over the next four years, we will continue to face challenging decisions that require thoughtfulness, objectivity, and reason. Although I bring an educator's perspective to the board, I promise you that this will not be my only lens. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Darling.
Oh. My name is Christina Darling, and first and foremost, I'm a solo mom of two amazing boys in our school district. And I'm a member of a hardworking class. I don't have the same educational background as most of the other candidates. Growing up, I attended public school, just like many of them. But instead of getting a more traditional degree, my resume is filled with trade school, healthcare certificates, and licenses. Unfortunately, a severe back injury a few years ago cut my nursing career short. But it was my 10 years of working in healthcare, primarily nursing homes and hospitals, that showed me how much helping others can truly feed your soul. Now, I spend my days working full-time for a nonprofit connecting tenants and affordable housing to services and resources throughout Southern New Hampshire and to help improve their quality of life. When I'm not working, I spend time with my boys and our dog Disney. And I work with various groups on the East Coast to help advocate for positive change within all of our communities. I have had the opportunity to testify and conquered both in favor of improving the New Hampshire Childcare Scholarship and against the state budget. And as a parent who knows what it's like to fight to make ends meet, even when working a salaried full-time position, to find a way to be able to stand up and help lift other people up with me. Living in affordable housing myself has also given me the unique perspective of what it means to be the head of a working, single-parent family in today's economy, and just how precarious that balance really is. I am running for the board to give the family like mine a voice. The families who feel this were made regarding remote learning, I wish someone had been at the table to stand up and point out the massive economic issues for those of us who are lucky enough to be essential, but not lucky enough to have access to local supports to rely on for things like childcare and increased food needs. I took it upon myself to reach out to the families in my immediate neighborhood and figure out who is securing the meals being provided at Dr. Crisp and deliver to all of the families within the complex I live at.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up. Ms. Faye Pearl. Wait a minute, I skipped Alison Dyer, excuse me. It will do this in alphabetical order. I'm sorry, Ms. Dyer.
No worries. Hello, I wanted to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Alison Dyer, and I am from Nashua all my life. I am a proud mom. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting, and aside from work and mom life, I enjoy spending time with my family, which includes my parents, my two sisters, my three nephews, one niece, and one unknown on the way. I decided to throw my hat in the ring for the BOE for Nashua. I'm sure very similarly to many of the other candidates, the pandemic being one, as it has shown some light into areas I feel like we could be doing better, as well as being a mom and aunt, a sister and a daughter here in Nashua, and having gone through the Nashville School District myself, I felt like I could give back to the community that paved the way for my own educational and career successes that I've been blessed with and to be a voice for the community, provide that seat at the table for the families, the taxpayers, the staff, and give the voice back to the parents feeling unheard or silenced or dismissed in the recent years of our district. My focus is in serving and trust to the community, the children and families, the staff, and the Nashville School District as a whole, not simply as a single constituency, and remembering that being your board member means serving and trust for our entire community. There's no way that nine people can provide a spokesperson for every constituency or legitimate interest. So in a moral sense, being a board member, I must stand for them all. You can be from a constituency, but you must not let it represent yourself. And I'm just a mom who wants to represent the best of my abilities to the parents, families, staff, and community that I love. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we have Ms. Faye Pearl. It is your turn to give us your opening statement.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity for today. My name is Caitlin Fahey Pearl. Me and my family have lived in the district since 2010. I have a child in every part of education right now. My oldest is a freshman in college, a recent graduate in North. My daughter is a junior at North. I have a sixth grader at Elm Street and a third grader at Birch Hill. My youngest is in the class of 2031, so I still have about 10 years left in the district. My children are very different from each other, like many children. And I've experienced the district in a lot of different ways, including sitting in IEP meetings and the Special Education Department. I have an honor student, I have an athlete, I have a child who is very involved in their own student government. I've also been an active member of volunteering and of the PTO at our elementary school. I'm looking forward to also getting involved in the middle school now that I have a middle schooler and no infants at home. I've been on the executive board of the PTO for seven years, including three years as president and currently as the vice president. I've worked closely with the staff and teachers there with the goal of providing the school with variety of events and fundraisers so that all of the students and families could take part, no matter their situation. I've been thinking about running for the Board of Education for quite a while. A few years back before the last election, I felt that there was a lack of representation for the varying abilities and differences of our population. I've gained a strong passion for helping our schools and our students. I believe that every student deserves a safe environment where they feel prepared to learn. I want to help Nashua continue to do that and move forward with technology especially. I believe families are a child's greatest advocate and the district's best resource for understanding what they need. I want to keep the families of Nashua engaged, informed, and involved in the decisions. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you very much. We have a statement from Christie Hart. Is that true? Who's going to read that statement?
I am. Carol.
Carol, thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Christie Hart. I'm sorry I can't be there today, but thank you for including me. I'm running for Nashua's Board of Education with two relevant perspectives. Someone who grew up in Nashua schools and a concerned mother of three young kids about to enter the school system. I'm concerned because it seems like politics and ideologies are starting to overshadow things like academics and parent voices. Additionally, having personally experienced multiple instances of bullying and sexual harassment inside of Nashua's school walls, I'm concerned better prevention and protection methods haven't been implemented 20 years later. Ultimately, I intend to do all I can to refocus our schools on academics, increase parent awareness and involvement, and improve the policies and programs surrounding matters that can greatly affect a child's educational experience, such as bullying, fighting, and sexual harassment. In doing all this, I believe will strengthen our ability to provide the children of Nashua with excellent learning and life experiences that will shape them into outstanding citizens and promote Nashua as a great place to live. If these things are also important to you, please vote for me on November 2nd. So that's for Christie Hart.
Thank you, Carol. Alicia, I'm sorry, is it Houston or Houston?
It's Houston, like the city in Texas.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters and the Nashville Public Library for hosting this event. My name is Alicia Houston. I am the mother of three children, two in the Nashville School District, and I'm running for a seat on the Nashville School Board for the November 2nd elections. As a member of the State Advisory Committee for the Education of Children and Students with Disabilities, chairing the Family Involvement and Outreach Subcommittee on the State Advisory Committee, and as a Parent Information Center Volunteer Advocate, special education holds a very special place in my heart. I'm asking for your vote on November 2nd because you deserve a seat at the table, and your voice deserves to be heard. Just shy of two years ago, the curtain was pulled back on our education leadership here in Nashua. What many of us saw was less than what we were led to believe. There was turmoil, politics, bias, and so much more sitting on the Board of Education, and the focus had diverted from the best interests of the Nashua education stakeholders. I'm running for the Board of Education because your voice matters. You deserve the right to choose what is best for your child and your children. We know our children, our money, best. And it is time to shift the focus back onto the wants and the needs of the community over personal bias, lack of focus, and the educational advancement of the children, families, taxpayers, staff, and administration needs to be on the forefront. Vote for me for your voice to be heard and your choices to return to your sole discretion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, would you please tell us why you are running and give us some idea of your background?
Sure. Hi, I'm Robert Johnson. I'm running for Board of Education. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Nashville Public Library for hosting. I am a father of two children, both at Nashville South, a freshman and a sophomore. I was concerned with what I was seeing from people running. I felt there was a lot of conflict. And I felt that we weren't going to be able to accomplish much if we're at each other like that. So I really decided to run to try to bridge the gap, to try to work with all involved, and to try to improve our student life for our students at school, and to take into consideration the thoughts and concerns of the parents, the teachers, and the students. I hope that I can be an important part of the board, and I hope I can help to develop better communication and to involve everyone. And that's all for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. The next candidate is Lynn Har- and I'm quite sure how to pronounce her name, Lynn Harrow. And she's unable to be with us. So Carol, would you please read her statement?
I don't believe we received a statement from her.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, next we'll hear from Mrs. Longshire. Are you with us?
Yes, I'm right here. Hi. Hi, my name's Regan. Thanks for this forum. I'm so excited to be here. So I, like everybody, like almost every else here as a mom, and I have one son that's grown up and lives in Boston. And I have another son who had severe disabilities. He had a good life because of people who had fought for the rights of people with disabilities. And that showed me that it only takes a small group of people to make a really big difference in the world. My son passed away nearly seven years ago when he was eight. And so I had to find something else to do with my life. And I couldn't think of anything better than advocating for kids with disabilities and families. So I went to the Leadership Series where Maggie Hassan got her start, which was a life-changing experience. And then I also attended the Parent Information Center Special Education Advocacy Training. I serve on the Council for Youth with Chronic Conditions, which is a statewide organization. And I'm also on the Family Support Council at Gateways. But I'm always looking for more ways to give back. I've thought about running for a local office for quite a while. I spent a lot of time advocating up at the State House and everything, and I find that kind of policy very, very interesting. It feels like the people who are actually at the table, they have that final vote. And so I feel like it could be, you know, I could really make a difference for people and impact in the community. So I decided to run for office. I've met so many great people. It's been a wonderful experience. But I do hope that I win because I want to be there on the board and make a difference. Thank you.
Very cool. Thank you very much. Mrs. Raymond.
Hi. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and to the Nashville Public Library for hosting this again this year. It's always a good experience, and you guys always make sure that it is fair. So I am Heather Raymond. I am the current board president. I've been on the board for the last four years. But a little bit about my background for those who don't know. My family, my husband, and my two children, I moved here in 2010 from New York State. I have a bachelor in science for psychology. I was a child protective worker and forensic interviewer in upstate New York for five years before I moved here. And then I worked for DCYF here in New Hampshire for about five years before moving over to Casa, where I was a program manager, helping supervise advocates who worked with children who were in foster care to make sure that their needs were properly represented to the judges in court. Now I'm home with my kids, and I decided to run four years ago because I needed something else. I've been really enjoying, for the most part, serving on the board, although the last 18 months have been especially challenging with the number of things that have been going on at the board meetings. I have learned a lot by being on the board. I know a lot about the laws in New Hampshire governing what the board can and cannot do, and a lot about IEPs and IEP law. I'm running again because I want to continue the work that we've started. The middle school projects are very important to me. We need to complete our superintendent search, and we need to complete the ELL settlement that we have with the Department of Justice, which is just starting this year. I absolutely adore Nashua. We moved here on purpose because we loved the community and we love the diversity here.
Okay, thank you very much. This is Tori.
Tori, am I up next?
Yep, it's your turn.
Okay. So good evening, everyone, and thank you to both the League of Women Voters and the Nashville Public Library for allowing us to participate in this forum. My name is Rosemary Torres, and I was born in the Dominican Republic. And I moved to the United States when I was eight years old. My family and I moved to Nashua where I started in the public school systems here in the third grade. I actually did three years as an ESL student, English as a second language. So I was able to graduate out of that and then continue on to my studies in the public schools in Nashua through Elm Street Junior High. And I was a proud grad, I am a proud graduate of the Nashville High Class of 2000. I actually met my husband in high school. He also graduated from the public school systems, and we have been married for 19 years. After that, we both went off to college. I got an education in finance. And I proudly became a US citizen. So I've been able to vote in every election since. We are parents of three kids, one that just started the middle school in Elm Street, a fourth grader at Birch Hill, and preschooler. I am also very involved being the current president of the PTO at Birch Hill Elementary. And I have board experience being on the Finance Committee for the YMCA of Greater Nashua. I am also a Realtor in the area, and my husband and I own two businesses in Nashua. I am running for the Board of Education because I feel that it needs a representation, a good representation of our wonderful and diverse community that Nashua has.
Thank you very much. Perfect timing. That concludes the opportunity for our opening statement. We will now go to the questions. The questions were submitted, and we had we tried to take the questions and put them together so that the questions that appeared to be the most often mentioned, the subjects that we would try and compile them. Now, because we have a short time, there is no doubt that we will not get to all of these questions. And I always tell candidates that, I would tell the public, that these candidates are your neighbors. And so if there's a question that you have and you wish to talk to any of them, I'm sure they would be very happy to answer your individual questions if you didn't get a chance to hear your favorite subject mentioned on this candidate tonight. For these, every question, every, each one of those candidates will have a minute and a half. You ready for that? For my timer is going, let us know. So when, at the end of a minute, I will wave the yellow flag. There is no opportunity for rebuttal. However, I will make an exception if any candidate is mentioned by name or title, and you need to respond to that. You will have 30, you will have 30 seconds for a brief rebuttal. But if so 30, you get a minute and a half for each one of these. And we have a wonderful member of the League of Women Voters who figured out a random order for these questions. So I don't have to guess at it. And so the order will vary for each one of the questions. So some of the questions that she has put together for us are rather lengthy. So I will, I will read you the first question, and I would be very happy to repeat it if that becomes necessary. But the most popular, unsurprisingly, is most common topic that visitors have been asked about was COVID safety measures. Are there circumstances under which you, as a candidate, as a member of the board, are there circumstances under which you would vote for mask mandates in the schools? Why or why not? Or how about vaccine mandates? Once vaccines are approved for children, young children. If you have any positions on COVID measures that you would support or oppose, please tell us about those as well. And you have a minute and a half. And for this one, we will start this with Ms. Faye Pearl.
Thank you. As far as right now mask mandates, I do feel that it should be parent optional for wearing masks in school at the moment. If numbers were increasing to a rate where the state decided that we needed to have a mask mandate, then I would maybe consider it. But with options for children when learning independently to remove their mask. At this time, though, I do believe that masks should be optional. As far as a vaccine mandate, it's only been about six months since the 12 to 17-year-olds have been vaccinated. I think that's too soon to mandate a vaccine in children, especially with a virus that changes, that can change like the flu. So I would not be comfortable supporting a mandate like with that either at the moment.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Tori.
Okay, thank you. So at this current time, I have advocated previously for parent and teacher option on masks. I feel that a good compromise could be in terms of having the current motion that was passed by the Board of Education to have a measurable way to let parents and teachers and the community and overall, everybody know when it would be safe to be able to lift that mask mandate. So I would be looking to support a matrix that allows for a measurable way to allow when that will come off, as well as being able to allow kids to be able to have mask breaks. You know, my daughter recently had her 11-year-old checkup after school has started, and her pediatrician was one of the questions that she had asked. And my daughter said, no, she doesn't have mask breaks during school. And I think that that's very, very important. There are definitely safety measures that I agree with that are currently in place in terms of constant hand washing, trying to do social distancing when possible and things like that. So I would be looking to just have a metric that would tell us when we would no longer be in that mandate. And as far as vaccines, I've talked to my daughter's pediatrician. She's interested in getting it if it does pass. And I believe I will, but that's a conversation that has been between my family, my daughter, and my pediatrician. And everyone in my household is currently vaccinated, and I would highly encourage anyone eligible to get vaccinated.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, I support mask masking right now. I think it can be adaptable. I think we look at the circumstances. I think the idea of a matrix in place to reach certain points where we can allow some of the students to go away from masks is a good idea. I do think we've seen in numbers especially that the school has lower cases than the community, so I think that is a good sign that masking has worked so far. Again, mask breaks like is a good idea, and we also should take a good look at the younger students and see how it's affecting them as we move along. I am very pro vaccine, but I don't go for a ma, vaccine mandate. I think vaccines need to be discussed with doctors and pediatricians. They are the experts. They're the ones who are in the know. And I encourage everyone who wants to get a vaccine to talk to their doctor and pediatrician and take their advice.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Dyer.
Thank you. I would never mandate either a vaccine or masks. I believe that both are personal medical family decisions that parents and children should make with their, you know, with their pediatricians or their doctors, and that that should be their personal choice. We do have schools here in Nashua that have masks optional, and they somehow seem to make it work. I think nineteen months into this, we know a lot more than we did when it first began. Handwashing, school sanitation, staying home when sick are all important factors here. But for me personally, I don't find it my place or a Board of Education's place or a government's place to mandate anybody do anything with regards to either masking or vaccines.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Ms. Houston.
Thank you. So I, I am not going to, as a person, mandate the choices of someone else. I it's something that, you know, obviously, we've thought a lot about over the last, you know, almost two years. And it is not my responsibility to tell another parent, even as an elected official on a board, on a Board of Education, whether or not they have to or do not have to vaccinate their child. That's a, that's a family decision. It's a personal decision for the teachers and the staff and the administration. So I would not be for promoting any kind of mandate. And with masks, I think that one of the things that people are maybe overlooking is that there are children and teachers that cannot wear a mask. And the students with the lost learning during the time that we were in remote, those students may or may not have been successful in remote learning. And at this point to date, Nashua does not have an exemption for in-person learning, regardless of whether or not you've received a pediatrician's letter or a doctor's letter or a religious exemption. So, no, I would not support those, and we need to make sure that we are making reasonable accommodations for people with disabilities.
Thank you very much. Ms. Darling.
So it's my belief that we need to avoid being forced back into remote learning as much as humanly possible. Part of that, the job of being on the Board of Education is also to protect public health within our capabilities, which is why I do strongly support our current mask mandate. I trust that the specialists who work within our local health department and the CDC are knowledgeable, and as I am not an immunologist, are better equipped to give guidance on best practices throughout our schools. Should I be elected? I would like to advocate for things like wraparound services. Should we have to go remote again? What the pros and cons have been of masks, how far behind kids currently are. And the biggest thing is I think we all need to focus on working together to get past this pandemic instead of sitting here being stuck arguing over masks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Claffey.
Hello, yeah, Ms. Ms. Darling, and I, you said basically, you didn't steal my words, but I share your thoughts exactly. As I said in the survey or the questionnaire that you asked us to fill out, I, we got to keep the schools open, and I'd say we defer to the CDC, the American Association of Pediatrics, the city's health director. We've spent two months of public comment talking about masks. Let's keep the schools open. The transmission rate, last time I checked, was this morning. It's a, it's substantial. It's over seven percent. Look at Tennessee. They close more schools than anywhere in the country. They didn't require masks. We need to move on. There's so much more to do. And I hope we have a lot more time tonight to talk about something else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. I will now select the next question that, judging from the comments that came from the public. Many voters are concerned about the combative nature of board meetings and the way that this may impede the functioning of your board. What?
Yes, excuse me. Did everybody get to answer that question?
Yes.
No, looks like Heather, Raymond, and Regan did not get a chance.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I was going by the list that Kate supplied, and I wasn't paying attention. So thank you. Can we start with Ms. Raymond? And thank you for keeping me honest. I appreciate that. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I wasn't sure if it was a only some people answer type of question.
They're supposed to go to all of them, and so I, I didn't count this, this list that was provided for me. I didn't count them up, so.
All right, that's fine. So, um, I, I think anybody who's watched the meetings knows that I think that we have an obligation to follow the advice of our public health. I, under our city charter, our charter actually says that the Board of Education is charged with the safety and public health of our students. And so to me, that means that we have to listen to public health and make sure that we're looking at the community. So as long as the public health department is recommending masks indoors, I will advocate for masks indoors. As far as vaccines, personally, my family's vaccinated. I can't wait for my daughter to get vaccinated. But I don't think that that is a local decision. I think that as far as vaccines go, that should be a state decision or a federal decision, just like all of the other vaccines that we require for school. We don't require a flu vaccine. We don't require certain other vaccines. And so I don't know where COVID would fall on what the Department of Public Health would think that was required for school. So I would leave it up to the hands of the experts for that determination.
Thank you. Okay, you folks are keeping me honest. Should I skip anybody else?
I haven't answered yet.
Well, please, thank you. I apologize. You can blame it on my bad eyesight.
There's a lot of us too. So I, I feel very strongly about masking. My son died from pneumonia, and it's been quite frankly offensive for me to hear people say, oh, people with disabilities and elderly people should just stay home. They have a right to be in the community, and if masking keeps all of us safe, much like seat belts and cigarette smoking in public, it's, you know, we should do what we can to make people safe. So as far as the schools go, you know, I think that, I don't think that optional masks work. I think for them to be effective, everyone has to wear a mask. And I do know that the numbers are still going up in Nashua, which is, you know, upsetting. But the numbers are going up a lot further in towns in New Hampshire that made masks optional. I, I don't want to see schools closed down again. That will be very harmful to all of the kids that are in school. And so masking is just one way to, to make, to let schools be open. As far as vaccines go, I think it's too early to make a decision like that, and it shouldn't be made at the local level anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, now I can go to the next one? Okay, thank you for keeping me honest. I appreciate that. The question that, the second question that was put together from the public comment, voters were concerned about the combative nature of board meetings and the way that this may impede the functioning of your board. What personal rules would you follow for how you would conduct yourself as a board member? What measures would you be prepared to take to ensure the tone and level, level of civility in meetings to allow the board to function effectively? And, all right, this time I'll use my magnifying glass, okay? We'll start with Ms. Dyer.
Thank you. With regards to civility in the boardroom, I mean, I personally, I, I can't recall a time where I haven't had an even keel tone myself in dealing with personal comment. I think that keeping a level head and keeping it cool, and again, even keel is just something personally that, that I do that kind of, you know, in, in essence, can calm a room when you stay calm, other people stay calm. I mean, there's always going to be, you know, an element of, you know, that whether, you know, we're not in a COVID time or we are in a COVID time, there are other things going on that are, you know, on people's minds, as we know bullying is one of them. So I just would continue to keep my even tone and my even keel and make sure that the people are heard. And I, I think that's what's missing that causes a lot of that angst is just feeling a certain type of way that, you know, what matters to you or to your children or to the families or to the community isn't important. So I'd like to make people feel that they're important again.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson.
I really feel it comes down to communication. It comes down to communication even after the meetings have occurred. The board has more information than parents do. They meet with the Board of Health, they meet with other groups. And my hope would be that if we could find ways to share more information through Facebook, through groups, through other ways to let them know why the decisions are made that they are for our students. I think a lot of parents take little tidbits, and they don't get the full picture. And the more we can do to present them with that full picture, I think we can reach better understanding and better communication to help them.
Thank you. Mr. Claffey.
Yeah, I think people need to know that the Board of Education is going to be, they do almost all of their work in small groups and committees. The public meetings is, is where maybe the final votes happen. This isn't where the work is being done. So I'm typically, if elected, I typically be working with a two or three people on a committee behind closed doors unless it's televised. And frankly, the, the public meetings have become a stage for people who aren't happy to express their, 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 they're mad, and people are frustrated by the pandemic, and I know that. But I feel that blaming the board for the pandemic, it's not productive, and it's not fair. And frankly, I plan to vote for Heather, and I don't mind. Can I say that here? Or is that, I don't, I didn't read all the rules, but can I say that I'm voting for one of the candidates?
I think you can.
Because I'm, I said it in the patch interview, but I'm afraid they're never going to run it. And I think she's done admirable, an admirable job of giving parents, citizens who are unhappy, even some who don't live here, a chance to express their frustration. I could not, I never would have been able to do the, the job that she's done. As a teacher, I'm out of a class of thirty-one students. I manage the department. We work with the middle schools. I had to deal with social studies teachers. We tend to be the most vocal. And we tend to disagree quite a bit, but for three years as our teacher, I tried to keep things cool when we were working through rewriting curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fay Pearl.
Thank you. Um, I think the combativeness is, it goes both ways. I know with watching the meetings, watching individual board members attack each other, backhanded comments, that trickles down into the community. It's okay to disagree. I truly believe that when you disagree, that's when you find the right solutions because you're working together to find something and hopefully meet in the middle. And I don't think we've seen a lot of people meeting in the middle recently. It's, I'm all here, I'm all there. Discussion is up. I know I've spoken at many meetings. I don't think, believe I've screamed. I know I have cried expressing needs for my family and frustration. I have, as a parent, often felt like I wasn't being paid attention to. And I just think that we need to start discussing. It would be nice to see individual members talking to each other, trying to reach across these political aisles that for education shouldn't be there. We need to find common ground and disagree respectfully with each other, and that's what I hope to bring is a listening ear and letting people know that I am listening to you, even when I don't agree with you. I will listen and I will take in what you're saying to me, and that will affect my decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Raymond.
Thank you. This is certainly a loaded question. I was actually on MSNBC last Friday talking about this because it's not anything unique to Nashua. School boards across the country are experiencing this, and school board members across the country are experiencing yelling and harassment in and outside of meetings. I think there's a couple of things going on. I think there are parents who are extraordinarily passionate about what they want for their children. I think there's a high level of disinformation out there about COVID. And I think that we have an issue where sometimes we can't meet in the middle. Sometimes we're required to do things, and some people aren't going to like them. And the public comment period is for informing the board. It's not a back and forth. I don't know that I've always handled it perfectly. I certainly know that I haven't handled it perfectly. I was really caught off guard by the level of vitriol that we've seen in our meetings. I was not prepared for groups protesting outside, including Proud Boys, Nazis, the Black Lives Matter organization, and other, you know, counter protests. I've been taking trainings about it, and really, the bottom line is, the advice I've been getting is that I haven't been strict enough with the rules. Everyone's telling me that anytime someone is out of line, I should ask them to leave the meeting, and I don't like to do that, and I think that that lets our meetings seem a little bit more complicated than they are. But what the public needs to know is that the superintendent runs the district and the board oversees the district. So if there's a problem with a policy, you need to contact the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Luntzer, Laffier.
Okay, so, yeah, I know that as a member of the board, it's my responsibility to be professional at all times, to be calm, and you know, not to get, let personal things come into the meeting. And I, I do believe that Heather has handled things appropriately. You know, people are angry and they are upset, and kids and families have suffered during this. But the board hasn't been able to do a lot of the things that they're actually there to do because it's been so contentious. I, I think that it's, it's kind of embarrassing that we have to have the police there, but I believe that the police should be, should be used, that we should escort people from meetings if they get, if they get really nasty and start swearing and, and insulting board members.
Thank you. You're done. Okay. Ms. Houston.
Thank you. Um, this is probably going to be my least favorite question of this evening. So I think that when it comes to leadership and when it comes to holding an organized meeting of any kind, leadership is really important, and, you know, someone else had mentioned. Holding an organized meeting of any kind, leadership is really important and, you know, someone else had mentioned. That, you know, there's a lot of infighting and I don't think that that sets the tone for the other parents. And I know that I, I personally am guilty and, and one of the things you can count on for me is that I'm going to be honest. Part of transparency is having access to information and having access to feel that your voice is being heard. From an honest recipient. And at this point, I think that what, what has led to some of the contentiousness in this. Is that we've had a number of months where parents had to make hard choices for their children and their families. And this was not easy on anyone. So everyone is very passionate. I myself have cried many, many times about what's going on, whether it be remote learning or having a child who has a disability who can't wear a mask. And those things lead to more passionate. Moments in these meetings and I think that it goes from the top down. And I think that as a board member, I will learn from my mistakes in the past and I will continuously work to improve on those. To make sure that the meetings are held effectively and we can focus so much best for the kids.
Thank you very much. Ms. Darling.
So, one of the most beautiful things about how our board is currently run is that the public can come in and say their piece. Compared to the number of times I've seen parents yell, scream, cry, or outright insult members of the board. It's rare that I've seen the parents' time given time cut short. I wouldn't expect the public to change overnight. I would certainly do everything I can personally to set a positive example and be the change I want to see. Starting with patient and active listening with honest feedback. I've heard so many of these parents say they feel like they're not being listened to. What I think many of them mean is they don't understand why people aren't seeing the situation from their point of view. They don't feel heard. With my ability to talk to people from all walks of life and meet them where they are. I am hoping that by taking the time to really have a conversation with individuals outside of the board meetings. I can either bring their perspectives back to the board in a way that can lead to effective change. Or help them to understand the proper chain of command that can get them the changes they're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Torrey.
Thank you. So I, um. I, I've heard kind of a, uh. Sorry, let me regroup here. I apologize. So there, obviously there are many parents that are passionate about advocating for their kids. And that must absolutely continue. I think there's a way that concerned parents can be heard. And not feel like they have not been paid attention to or given the time of day or just dismissed. You know, with, without a second thought. And that can be done respectfully. And I think everyone in the, you know, a boardroom should be able to respect each other. And understand that there needs to be compromises and be able to listen. And as a board member, where they're, you know, as leaders and representing the community. And we need to start with the behavior there so that kids watching, you know, children watching are able to learn from our behavior. So I would be, you know, the board needs to, to listen, they need to be respectful, they need to be professional towards one another. And they need to be able to work together and compromise.
Thank you very much. Okay, folks, according to my calculations, you've all had a chance. Is that correct? All right. Anybody want to leave anybody out? The next question we have is about the hiring of your new superintendent. The new board will be participating in that hiring process. What qualities would you look for in selecting a new superintendent? And what do you think that you could do as a board member to assist that person? In becoming an effective superintendent? And I will start that question with. Mrs. Raymond.
Thank you. That's a huge search. I don't know if people are aware, but there are eight other districts in New Hampshire currently looking for a new superintendent, so competition is going to be fierce. Having said that, I would really like somebody who has had experience negotiating with unions. Who has managed a district budget of our size, we have a hundred and sixty-five million dollar budget. Somebody who. Knows how to. Manage a district with eleven thousand students who's ready to jump in and handle our settlement with the DOJ. Because most of our. Teachers. Professional development over the next three years will be related to that settlement. I guess I'm also hoping. You know, if, if I had my entire wish list, that we get somebody who we can afford. Because our budget is tight. And I missed the second half of that question, I'm sorry.
Okay, what kinds of things would you do to assist that new superintendent to become effective in his or her new position?
So what I'd really like to do for a new superintendent is to help them to find a mentor. Here in New Hampshire. I think that a mentoring program was something that was, has been lacking in the past. And can help a new superintendent to understand the laws in New Hampshire, which are a bit different than they are in other parts of the country.
Thank you very much. Mr. Claffey.
I was told my head disappeared, so, well.
I'm glad you're back.
I was told. I, I was told that, um, it, the pool of qualified applicants. Is tiny because of this one credential that's required. And I know that when it comes to filling some other positions in the district, you're able to get a waiver. So one of the things I would ask that we looked into is whether or not we can expand the pool somehow. And I don't know what the requirements at the state level, but it didn't sound as if we've looked into that. The second thing is, I read an article a short time, a short while ago in the union leader that looked at the past thirty years or so. What we've, what they found is that the superintendents who have lasted the longest. Were somehow rooted in Nashua. And I'm not saying we don't look across the country for the best candidates. But if you talk to veterans, people have been over here a long time, they're, they're aware that sometimes when you recruit from without. The candidates don't tend to stay. And the last thing I want to say is, I ran into our former superintendent the other night. And he is now managing a district. I'm talking about Dr. Mosley. His district is the size of one of our high schools. And I tried to find a salary to see whether that salary is competitive. And in fact, I couldn't find his, but I found the salary for the previous superintendent out in Western Massachusetts. So if you're going to pay someone the same kind of salary, similar salary to manage a district of eleven thousand students. That you do for eighteen hundred students, you're going to have a problem recruiting the best.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I think, and what we're seeing is that, especially since we've seen it already where they. Tried to find one this past year and had a lot of problems. It's gonna be difficult position to fill because we have a limited budget. And we have to look for someone who can handle a school system this size. And still work within that limited budget. So ideally, want a candidate that has some sense of how to work with those sort of things. And also, I want someone who's got some fresh ideas. I want someone who's a little independent, doesn't, uh, I don't expect our superintendent to always agree with the board. I think we need someone who brings in a different look of things. And as far as helping them along, um, I mean, I think we offer them as much support as we can. We help find them help where they need it. We help them become familiar with our school district and with the state of New Hampshire's requirements. And we hope for the best.
Thank you. Ms. Darling.
So, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, like what makes a good superintendent? And what it kind of comes down to for me is I just, I want to see that substance of character. I want to see a proven track record with hands-on leadership. And, you know, we don't need a superintendent who's going to be sitting behind a desk all day, every day. We need someone who is keen to get into the schools, see how they're running firsthand, visit often. Given our size, our budget and some of the immediate issues that are going to need to be dealt with, like the teacher shortage. We need to find somebody who sees Nashua as like a healthy challenge, as their personal Everest. Someone who wants to make it their own and succeed and see our district succeed. As a board member, I know that I will do anything I can to help the superintendent feel at home in Nashua. Help share the aspects of life that make the families that live in my community, you know, happy, that make us keep returning to Nashua. Every single day after work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dyer.
Thank you. Um, so I, I agree with the majority of what the other candidates have said thus far. I think that important qualities are going to be leadership. I mean, the, the superintendent is essentially the chief operating officer of the district. And having a working knowledge of policy, development, curriculum. Budgets. And like the New Hampshire Department of Education's policies and procedures, state law is important. I know that coming up through the Nashville School District myself, that. Teachers became wonderful principals and principals became superintendents. I think that, you know, having someone coming from. E- even if they're not coming from a district this size, but coming through the system in the way that they get that type of development. Is going to be important because like what Christina said, I think that it's important that, you know. They come to Nashua and they make it their own, they take that challenge and they roll up those sleeves and, and they want to get to work and they, and they. They want to make it there, so I find those qualities and qualifications to be important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Torrey.
Thank you. So superintendent is definitely something that the new board is going to get tasked come January. I am looking for a strong leader, hopefully with some experience. Not necessarily in the district, but being able to understand the challenges that this district would have. If it's not one that, you know, would come from within the district. Uh, they need to be a great communicator. Uh, I don't think, you know. I, I've heard time and time again about, uh, parents not understanding what's going on, so communication is key. They need to be a decision maker, so if they come to the board with a decision and. They're challenged, be able to stand behind it and kind of fight for it and why, or, or, or back it up in a good way. Transparency is obviously important. Being able to collaborate with, with the board and the, the, the administration team behind him or her. Uh, and being engaged in the community is also important. Um, I believe I heard it before, just not standing behind the desk. So being able to be in, you know, show involvement in the community is also great. And being able to show that they are, you know, they're, they're ready for. You know, for this new task and for this challenge and stay here for the long term. It's very, very important to have a, a stable leader in, in any. Organization.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Did I miss anybody this time? Thank you for keeping me honest. I appreciate that.
Edith, I think you missed a couple of people.
All right. All right, Ms. Lantier, yes, thank you.
Well, looking, looking for a superintendent, I, I do believe that it's important that they have experience with the large school budget. Millions of dollars are at stake and, um, you know, we don't have that much money to waste, so we need someone who really knows what they're doing. We want someone who has sterling recommendations from people they worked with in the past. And a history of accomplishing things for their school district that they've come from. And, um, you know, all that's important. And I think that when we hire a new superintendent. We need, it's important to establish mutual respect for each other, to treat our superintendent as we would like to be treated and hopefully. You know, we develop a good relationship, communicating with each other is important. And then we also need to allow them to, to lead, to, to set the tone for our district.
Thank you very much. Ms. Faye Pearl.
I think my answer will echo a lot of everybody else's. I know, you know, we all want a strong leader with. Experience in a district that's this size, you know, with the population of our district. It doesn't sound that, you know, it's competitive out there. Um, you do have a budget. I do think that the leadership skills are super important. If somebody can come in, like Ms. Darling said, and take it on as a challenge, we may not find somebody that's been in a district this size. But they may have had experience with the size of our budget. I think as a board member with that new person that we do find. I would want somebody who will communicate well, who will come to us, to us with decisions, be able to explain them, advocate for them. And as a board member, I would trust that we put the right person in that job. Being here for ten years, I think one thing I would look at in applications is staying power at their other job. If it was a principal that happened to be a candidate, just per se, that they were there for a while. I've been in Nashville since two thousand and ten. And we've had more than four, I think, four or five superintendents. And I think it's time we, we, we find a good candidate. Yes, with all of them to have experienced the size, but I think we can find somebody that shows. That they have the knowledge to grow with Nashua, because someone who grows in this position may stay longer. Thank you.
Ms. Houston.
Thank you. Um, so I, I, clearly I would echo a lot of the sentiments of the other candidates with the leadership. And having communication be a, a huge, a huge component of the type of leadership that we're looking in here. Somebody who's willing to get into the community, to be engaged in the schools, to be engaged with, you know, the negotiations process and. But as far as the budget goes, I kind of am on the opposite side of this. I think that we do have a really large budget and I know that for some people that might seem overwhelming or we need the experience with the larger budget. I think that somebody coming from a smaller budget, who knows how to kind of put, you know, two pennies together to make a dollar. I think that that would be beneficial to us as well. Mainly because I think that it's, it builds the experience of how to effectively manage a budget. But I know that a lot of other candidates had said that having somebody who goes into the schools, having somebody who engages with the students, who engages with the parents. Who's open with communication, who works well in collaboration with the Board of Education and the members. But again, bringing it down to those leadership skills, the communication and then having the experience with, with any budget, not just a large budget. I do think that having somebody from a different, a different. A different stance with a smaller budget could still work to our advantage as long as it's the right candidate.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, that's got all the, all of you. I apologize. It is now quarter of, and so we're going to go to the closing statements. You each have one minute and I would ask you to think about what you wanted to say tonight. Was there anything that came up that you didn't get a chance to say in these questions because we were so limited? So please tell us what else you'd like us to know before we conclude this meeting. Uh, and here again, I'm going to bury it and you guys are going to keep me honest, right, if I screw it up. Uh, and we'll start with Mrs. Torrey.
Thank you. So once again, thank you for allowing this forum to happen and for us to be able to let the. Voters of Nashua know where we stand. So like I had said before. One of the reasons why I ran was because I feel the board needs a representation of our diverse community. one of the reasons why I ran was because I feel the board needs a representation of our diverse community. And I have firsthand experience understanding that diversity in communities. Having grown through this district as an ESL student and now going through as an active parent. Oh wow. Having able to go through as an active parent. So I not only would I be able to advocate for those who cannot, but I can also be an ambassador back to the community. And I faced many challenges being a business owner with my husband. And like I, we like to say in real estate, I am ready, willing, and able. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson.
Just like I say, a few things I forgot in the intro, which is I, my experience is working on the New South Wales PTO for seven years. And that helped me a lot working as a team, getting things done. We accomplished a lot in that school over our years there. I also have experience on the higher education level. I was a student activities coordinator at a college overseeing student government and other aspects of school. And one of the things we did there was we introduced peer mediation and peer involvement in helping students adapt to school and college life. And I think we could probably see something like that on the high school level. It could probably help reduce fighting and bullying on that level involving the students in those sort of things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Lampier.
So one of the things I'm really concerned about is the severe shortage of teachers, bus drivers, power professionals, lunch, late, food service and custodians even. The personnel that actually work in the school are like, are the backbone of the school. And without them, there really is no school. And but because of decisions made at the state level, and I think it's very important for people in Nashua and other communities to understand that because of decisions made at the state level, our budget is going to be very, very tight. It's the next few years are going to be really difficult and we're going to have to make some tough decisions. But our children should be our priority and that means our schools should be our priority.
Thank you. Okay, one minute. Mr. Claffey.
Start the clock. Okay. Thank you to the co-sponsors for holding this forum. I feel a personal connection to you both. And I believe what I have to say about this is relevant to the values I would bring to the board. Ms. Frank, my wife's first job after college was at the League of Women Voters Headquarters in Washington DC. She wouldn't let me, she wouldn't let me say how long ago, so I'm going to honor that. And she has since devoted her life to public service and government and higher education. The league got her off to a great start. Ms. Simon, my mother became a librarian, although she spent a good deal of her childhood in an orphanage. She earned a scholarship to college, majored in library science. And I was raised to believe that education meant everything as it had for her. I am deeply, deeply grateful for having the opportunity to serve Nashville's high school students for thirty-two years and can't imagine teaching anywhere else. I work with wonderful, dedicated teachers and staff. And in my new career delivering for TJ's Deli and catering, I've had the pleasure of running into former students and their young families. One just offered to host my sign in their yard close to Charlotte Avenue Elementary School, which our two boys attended. It's gratifying to see that so many of them have decided to stay and enroll our children in our schools. We must ensure that their faith in us is rewarded. I would appreciate your vote on November second. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Houston.
Thank you. And thank you again to the League of Women's Voters and the Nashville Public Library for, for hosting this. And thank you to all the candidates for running. I know this is not easy. I know I've been sweating this whole time. So I, I am looking for a vote on November second for the Board of Education because I am a mom and a parent, just like many of you. I am a community member, just like many of you. I, you know, I value the, the importance of education. Without education, it's the, it's the foundation of everything that you're going to be and everything that you want to be. And I think that stems down to, you know, not just for the children, but finding ways that we can work collectively as a district to proper budgeting, good communication, finding ways to improve the retention rates for our staff and our administration and the food service workers and everyone. I think that we have a breadth and depth of opportunities here to build the community and to re, reinvigorate the Nashua School District. So please vote for me November second.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Raven.
Okay, thank you guys. And I'm so glad that so many people were able to make it this evening for this forum. So I just wanted to speak very briefly about the fact that there's more to the board and more to the district than COVID, which has been occupying so much of our minds. And I'm hoping to continue on the board so I can continue some of that work. Just some highlights about things that have kind of gotten lost in the noise of, of COVID. Over the last couple of years, the board has been able to update the CTE program for, to add machining and robot algebra and drone programs. We just approved five hundred thousand dollars to Mount Prospect to provide in-school mental health services. We're renovating Franklin Street. We just completed the renovation of fairgrounds. We've updated our science curriculum. There's a lot that has been happening beyond COVID.
Thank you very much. Ms. Faye Pearl.
Thank you very much for hosting this this evening. I appreciate being able to speak. We're going to be coming out of COVID and the next board is going to have a lot of things on their plates. But I think first and foremost, we need to address the mental health crisis of our children. The PDA Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics just released saying it's, we're in a state of emergency here. So I think that as parents, as board members or in our administration, we need to figure out how to identify these kids and need to make sure that they're getting the help so that they can come out of COVID strong and ready to continue learning and make up the education the education lack that they may have experienced. And I think first, we really need to, we need to check in on the mental health. I was very surprised at the number of our students that were released that have been seeking and needing medical, psychological help. And I know the waiting, there's still kids that haven't gotten appointments yet. So as a mother and a board member, that would be my first goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Darling.
It is my belief that education is the backbone of any healthy society. And our teachers here have this amazing task ahead of them in preparing students, not only for their futures, but our entire city's future. Because someday they're going to be our lawyers and our doctors and our business owners. I've spent a lot of time wishing I could do more to help improve our district for all of our children. And it was only until I realized that the only thing stopping me was this idea that only people with money and influence could possibly win an election. I'm here today not as a politician, but as a mom who loves this city more with each person I've had the pleasure of meeting. And I think our kids deserve the best possible chance of success in their future. And I know with my unique way of seeing the world, I can help make that happen, but only with your vote on November second. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the library for hosting this forum and the candidates who took the time to be here tonight to help voters make the most informed decisions. It's been an honor to be here and speak with you all tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Dyer.
Thank you. And thank you to the League of Women's Voters again for this forum tonight, as well as all the other candidates. Best of luck on your continued campaign and everybody get a vote on November the second. And feel free to contact myself directly, either through my Facebook page or email. And I just wanted to say in closing that, you know, leading with transparency sets the standard for the open communications and well-managed expectations and advocacy. So the more engaged the students, staff, and parents are in advocating for the successes of their educational environment, the greater likelihood we are to obtain a prosperous and rewarding future for the Nashville School District. Thank you.
Wow, that's a great way to end. Thank you very much. I leave anybody out? This was usually my favorite part when everybody got to applaud. So I want to thank you all because you all did a great job. And I think that we look forward to seeing what's going to happen. Polls open November second at six o'clock in the morning. And thank you all for your participation. And now I turn it back to Carol and the library. Thank you. You guys have been amazing. I appreciate all your assistance.
Thank you very much, Edith, for moderating. We really appreciate that. And thank you to all the candidates for participating. And as I mentioned earlier, the, the evening was recorded. If you have registered for the event tonight, you'll receive a link in your email to watch the recording. And it will also be available through our local access TV stations. So thank you again, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you very much. You guys did a great job. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
It was fun. Thanks. Bye bye.
Good luck, y'all.